So we'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Patients on technical issues and tonight we're going to welcome Mary Anne who is very interested in doing the board. Give yourself a phone.
Oh, sure. We just even. And I'm seven for an issue. And I I've just really been interested in trying to do some things for the community. Out and it's just seems like we're central.
Awesome. Well, glad you could join us tonight and we'll do our quick intro. So you know who we are. She's one of our newer members.
Sarah Duncan, secretary.
You know me. And Scott's on the phone and he's our. All right. So first quick orders business. We need to approve the minutes both from our April meeting and then also casually approve them for the annual. We like to do that while we still remember what happened and then officially approves them next April. It's a long time away. So can I have a motion to approve the April minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a second. Any discussion, changes, questions? All in favor? And then for the annual meeting, we won't do a whole motion, but just if anybody have any comments, questions, changes. No. Okay, good. So we'll just say I can just have those ready for next year. All right. So we'll move into the director's report.
I tried for the director's report to put at least all of the statistics down from March as well as April because obviously it wasn't here. So that's why there's a ton of programming statistics. It was a busy couple of months and I'm sorry I wasn't here for a lot of it, but things still happened. We definitely had the songs and story and art done by calls himself John Brown, but it was a great program. And it was just me and Jen and two other people here. Unfortunately, but he was, he's really good. He's fantastic. So maybe we'll try again sometime. I don't know.
But. I feel like that's the kind of program that people say that are interested in, you know, right? It's like.
And then they just get. They don't go. Yeah. And we did have another supply swap. And unfortunately, only one person donated a tiny little box of stuff that, but we had 29 people show up looking for things. So. The garden supply swap. Well, it wasn't really a swap. It's like more like a free sale, you know, so it, yeah, so that was a little disappointing.
It did say you didn't have to bring anything swap. Sorry.
Yeah. Just need, they needed stuff. I don't know. I was talking to the gardeners and they're like, or you know, people can do gardening, not gardeners. And that's just, they were like, well, this is the time when you start. So you want supplies and I don't, I'm not sure, but we're going to keep trying. We're going to do another one in June, which is going to be another art supply free sale. So let's see what we can do again. And then the other couple of things coming up, the bigger program that we have coming up that really let people know about is the downsizing, decluttering and kind of spring cleaning program. So that actually, the woman who's doing the program has been owns a company called Senior Moves. And this is what she does for a living and she's got a lot of knowledge about how to help you or your family or whoever downsides. How do you make those decisions? Yeah, it did. Yes. Yeah, I saw that. Yeah. Well, the book, we, I mean, we could always like, you know, get some pizza or something if you want to make it so that everybody can just keep staying along. Have you, have you used this in a year? No, garbage. I don't know where that toaster went. I'm so sorry. Cheryl is going to run a plant swap for us. I think run a plant swap. She said she'll be here for that. I'm going to bring a baby cafe. So we get some moms for the wedding. So it's story time about the baby cafe. It's a support group of breastfeeding moms. And then I talked to a woman who does a couple of story time with her son and she's going to be doing. We're going to do like flower sacks and learn how to dye them with natural materials and do like sun printing and stuff. So it's fun. So she was very excited to to share that with everybody. Dungeons and Dragons is taking a break. The kids have kind of gotten so busy that no one's able to get together right now. So we're gonna, I'll talk to the kids again and see if they want to start it back again at some point soon. Magic.
Yeah, I know the last team night somebody, one of the kids.
Yes, I have to look at starting that. And I also have to touch base. There's another man who wants to do like a Star Wars themed, the indie group for adults. So. So yeah, so that's, it'll be, we're, and then I'm gonna, we'll have to start getting ready for for summer reading and doing all of that stuff. So. And we did receive bad news today that we did not get the grant from Dollar General. So. It looks like it's going to be. Yours truly here doing the majority of the work for some of it. So we'll figure out what we can do and make it work.
Did they ever give you an indication of why or it's just?
We didn't get the letter yet. So the notice is today. And so I'm just rushing my website a million times. And then finally it came.
Yeah, I was pretty bummed. I was, I was looking to, I kept going over to the trustee email and my email and going back. But we'll make it work. It's not something that's seen completely on, we'll definitely make it work. Circulation is about the same as it has been. March was a little bit higher than than it has been here this, or in April. Yep, someone was. Yeah. So those numbers are not just things that go over our desk, but that also includes things that go over, like that are our items that go to other libraries. So that's why it looks like it's so high, because it is, I mean, people are borrowing our items, which is great. We want that. And then, yeah, exactly. You can also see our visits to the library is also going up again for April. It was up and same thing for March. I'll be interested to see what May brings us and the rest of the months in the summer because of. The expedition. We'll see whether that had, I mean, I know it had a huge effect on us, but I'm curious to see how much of one. And then I just showed we have 26 new adults patrons and five adult youths year to date. So that's an increase. We had nine people sign up to be patrons in, well, it would have been eight, March and April. So pretty good. And then I just have my statistics that I put some reflection development that you can see. And then in terms of other things that have been happening, obviously I was on vacation and then went straight from vacation to medical leave. I'm back and totally up and running and all is good now. So happy to to be there. Been meeting with, you know, Jen and Richard about financial reports, Sarah and Jen about branding, marketing. I did attend the DA meeting in person on Friday. That was this Friday or last Friday, but. Our state aid is up for construction by 4%. So UHLS has 1.4 million to give out to all of the different projects that have been submitted, which is great because it's the largest increase in 12 years for the library budgets. We are, they went over a couple of other things in terms of virtual participation by the board for open meetings law. The biggest thing that's going on is that the Schenectady County Public Library is splitting off from the Mohawk Valley Library System. And they are trying to see if they can do an interlibrary loan program with Upper Hudson. And it's going to be a big thing and everybody's trying to figure out what they're going to do. And they're just now in the research section of everything. So it's something to, that's a lot of conversations are happening. It could, because if we do it, then their entire library system is, has access to our, all of our materials. So we could end up. Our circulation, it's really going to be a problem for the people like Gilderland that are on those, you know, right on the borders with them. So, but it's all up in the air too, because they don't know whether or not. SCPL is going to want to be a part of Upper Hudson Library System fully. And do we ask for that? Or do we just let them library loan, the interlibrary loan program with us? It's, it's kind of crazy. So they're figuring all that out right now. So it could, it could affect us just in terms of our circulation. People are waiting for items, you know, for with new stuff, but I try to take care of our patrons by keeping the new stuff as non-requested so that you can come into the library, get what you want and go. So it's not leaving the library immediately. So I'm hoping it won't. Um, it's very big, but it's not as big as. Albany. They're not, they don't do, they don't circulate as much as we do. But I don't know why. I just know it's, it's a, it's a big topic. Everybody's got a lot of thoughts about it. So. Other thing that that DA meeting that was pretty cool, nice was that Loren, TJ was gave us, did a talk books and Braille library presentation and what we have available to people who. Limited with their site. And it is a lot of really good stuff. So. I mean, I just kind of put it out there and reach out and, you know, people, if we know of anybody who does have, is blind or is legally blind, we have so many. That they can get through the mail, they can get through us. We can help them set up an account with them so that they can just, you know, send what they want. Or even call and just say, hey, I want this talking book with this type of books on it. All James Patterson and they can load up a book, a machine with a book with like five or six books on it and send it out and then they can get it back. And it's pretty cool.
Have the new resident welcome meeting if we could ask people if they or someone they know locally has an issue with that, be interested.
That's a good idea.
Just probably put it out on the, on the Steven Town.
Yeah.
Kind of a hard group to know about.
The other thing that Upper Hudson is now working on helping with is doing library books by mail, which they've set up a whole system to do. So we can use them if we want to. We wanted to say, but it's a free program. So you don't have to pay for the postage, which is fantastic. So we can also start. I just got the email about that today, saying we can start advertising that. Also attended the e-content advisory committee meeting. Big conversation with that was also the same thing with. SCPL, the join our system, but they don't. We're not too thrilled about the idea for. E-content. The right now. They have a large group, but they don't have as much material to give to our collection. So it's not, there's a. Make long times really long for the patrons that are already waiting like 30 weeks for a book or, you know, so. But again, everything's very much up in the air. We've, we are completely and totally transitioned to fiber services for phone and internet. We even now have call waiting and we have caller ID, which we've never had before, ever. So it's kind of nice to be able to say that. Seems like everything's working well. Consolidated did overcharge us big time. That's why the bill was big last time. But we're at a negative balance right now, credit, because I called and we were able to work that out. So luckily that was. Our scholarship application is available. It's on the website. I think have some copies printed out and they're at the desk. Camp counselor applications are also available. They are on the website. And I think we have 12 kids already who have applied.
Really?
Yeah. They put, I'm pretty sure the school did something on their Facebook page. Camper applications I'm working on, that'll be by next week. Did go to a couple of summer reading or summer reading trainings. I've also been talking with Doug North from the Berlin Library and they really want to get their kids to our, to summer camp here. So they're offering a scholarship. To admit five kids either for the full four weeks or for just two weeks, you know, two weeks and then two weeks. The cost is going to be $500 per month or per, for the whole month per kid. Yeah. So. Normally we've been doing 400, but I did the numbers this time and our, the number, the cost has gone up to about 460. So make it. Berlin. Yeah. So we're working together with him to let people know that, you know, there's scholarship available for any Berlin kid who wants to go. And they're gonna, they are going to work on the whole applications, how they're gonna do. Yeah, how there is. They'll collect, but we won't know how many spots are available until we have all of our kids signed up. Usually we only sign up between 50 or like 30 to 50 and we have enough space for 60. I don't think it would be.
That would be nice. I mean, that we've been hoping to get more of those out of town.
Right.
The past couple of years. So that seems good.
That would be really good. And then we all met over at the summer, or we're at the fire hall where summer camp's going to place this year. So I'll already talk about that later. I don't know if everyone remembers, but we were, we're going to add tablets from T-Mobile and Premier. I have the tablets. They're here. They're in my office charging. I'm going to be cataloging them probably tomorrow and then I need to set up a training for staff to be able to know how to use them. And, and that's Premier Wireless is going to help us with. So they'll train us to a virtual training. But so far, so good. I mean, I was playing around with them and they, they seem they're working and they have a lot of information. I just, I don't know Android very well. So I have an iPhone. So I don't know like how to, they can download stuff onto the tablet, patrons can. But I don't know how. So I just need to learn that stuff. And then I'll also learn how to wipe it clean when it comes back. So everyone will know how to do that. But there, it's, it's nice. It seems like a good thing. So hopefully we'll get them going. I just got some that with Barry. And let's see, insurance coverage for summer camp has been a question from town. We've at least just done it so that summer camp was covered by the town because the town's paying for it and through Rensselaer County, they're the ones who get. Rensselaer County asks for the insurance certificate from the town. But I just called our insurance company and they're very like, we've never had this before. So we need to figure this out. Like, so I'm waiting to hear back. About that. It shouldn't be a problem for us for this year, but when it comes back to us, do we have to pay extra insurance because we have the kids on? Is it considered a normal program? Like, I mean, we have kids here all the time anyway. Is it considered above and beyond? Is it, you know, need more liability? That's kind of. Right. Okay. Well, they're looking into it to figure it out because right now. Yeah, well, that's. We can't do that. So, yeah, so we're trying to make sure that the town is covering the fire department. Fire department is, it's just with all the insurance and stuff, kind of. Exactly, exactly. So I'll be continuing to work on that and getting all that stuff done by before summer camp starts. And then the only other thing is that I have, if anyone is interested, I do sign up or I have a memorial scrapbook signed up from Vicky. So we have people who've been writing things and sending stuff in. So it's been, it's been really lovely. So if anyone else wants to do that. Yes, well, someone just added a new one with a beautiful drawing of the library. Wow, this is great. So. I don't know. Okay, I was wondering, yeah.
Started back to work like Monday since Tuesday. He worked at Napa. He worked one week and then he passed away. He just called him. He didn't want to get out of bed. Not doing so. But he was there when I, when I was. She won't even park in her spa. I just drove by tonight and then so he parks in the middle of the driveway because she always parked here and he won't even park in her spa. And he's really, I mean, that's just an example. And he said he wanted to come in and look at the book. I just wondered if he had.
I haven't seen him and I don't think anyone else has mentioned anything. So, but he's welcome to come in and look at it. It'd be great if he wants to. That's the plan. At once it's finished, like in a couple of months, I want to give as many people. Oh, okay.
Who does now?
Good, very good.
Maybe that's why he didn't stop in because I just wondered.
Yeah, it would be great. I mean, if you talk to him and if he wants to, please tell, be happy to see him. I actually have a sweater that was. Unless he doesn't want it, we keep it here. Yeah. I'm glad they're able to keep in touch with him.
Yeah.
Really good. One thing I didn't put in my report that we are, had to just, I want everybody to be aware of, and I've already talked with Upper Hudson and I put stuff out. We have a patron, a teenage patron who has been suspended from Berlin School for making a threat against the school. So. Technically, I'm not supposed to know any of this because he's not, he's a minor, but it's small town. Everybody knows who he is. It's just the way it is. So he comes to his teen night every now and then. He was our last teen night. The police were involved. They found no weapons. It was not, they didn't charge him with anything. You know, they were with him for a really long time. So I put it out to the DA, like, how do we deal with this? Do you guys not allow kids to come back in? You know, do we be the safe place that they can come in? He's never done anything here. He's always been actually a really polite. Except for summer camping, he was a little rowdy. He was really rowdy, but that's someone in. The last couple of times I've seen, he's been extremely nice. That's exactly.
Right. Signed up for someone.
No, no, he's too old. No, he's too old for it. I don't think he was even here last year. Um, so it's just one of those. I reached out because I was. My instinct is, no, we should be here. You should come in. We should be our safe, a safe place. It should be a place where you can back. But if he's been suspended for talking, threatening the school, then that's pretty big. So. But everybody that I've talked to is agree with what my gut was. So we're gonna, you know, until, and unless he ever does anything here, we're not gonna. We're gonna just make sure that he's safe and know that he knows that.
Does he have a relationship with the parents?
Only because I've known them since he, you know, because they've been, they come here, you know, but I know it was a, a pretty big thing. Like the, the police were at his house for hours and hours and hours doing stuff, working with them. So. So, you know, it was just one of those like, oh, how do we, you know, how do I handle? But if he comes tomorrow, we'll be happy to invite him back in and, you know, kind of see where it goes from there. I think that his. I think when he did that, it was probably like cries for help type of the thing. He sent it to his girlfriend and it was like, so it wasn't something that was online. And, you know, saying to lots of other kids, like, we had issues yesterday or today or, yeah. Oh, no.
And I'm actually doing home instruction for the student now. And I know her pretty well. And I just think that, I'm not saying that people overreact. I'm not saying that. But it's taken so seriously that even if it's something that comes out of their mouth. Police are involved. They're suspended. I mean, it's, it's, it's. Big deal.
Right.
You know, I'm a student, a girl who wrote something. In the same, it's treated the same way. If it's written down, if it comes out now. But yeah, so that was, that was to that.
Yeah, I saw the email coming. I was like, oh, this is nice. So, yeah, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of it, that, you know, I'm aware of it and that it's something that we're, you know, at least keeping on top of in case, you know, other parents are like, oh, why was he there? He's consistent. Well, this is a safe place. He's never done anything. If he does something against our behavior policy, then that would be. Grounds first, you know, banning him from the library, but as, until that happens, you know, so. And it was fun. He came to our, came to our Halloween party and I haven't seen him in years. And he's like, do you know who I am? No. And he told me his name and I was like, oh my God, the last time I saw you, you were like this tall and now you're taller than I am. And you could see the happiness on his face, just how happy he was that he got like recognition. Yeah. So it was like, we're good. So, but I'll let you guys know. So that's my. Report.
Question. Do you know if somebody came in and checked out for pressure cuff yesterday?
They, yes, I think they did. You know. Jody asked me about it. So they must have taken it out. Yeah. It only took a year, but we did it. Yeah. And they'll be able to take, actually that's the thing about the tablet is that we downloaded the app for the, the blood pressure cuffs. And use it for the two weeks to monitor everything and see how it goes if they don't want to put it on their own phone or if they don't have a phone. So, yeah. Jody, I'm sure it's almost possible.
Moving on to treasurer's report.
Have the made E and L and the bank account balances. Or as per usual, we're. Well ahead on expenses. We've got about 46,000 in expenses, not a budget of 133. So. But that's the first four and a half months of the year. So that's normal. Tracking all pretty normally. Got a lot of money in the bank. Thank goodness.
And just two things to be aware, after the annual meeting, because we came within available ahead of time, medical need. We went back afterwards and just adjusted the financial reports according to how they pulled them up and how they've been in the past. So we did upload revised annual report financials to the website. And that was what we meant about, we've got sort of a template, how that all rolls up. So we should have that for the future. And that, and those numbers are what ended up being on the impact report. So we can show all those were in agreement before they got further, further publicized. Richard, you were talking about how we've done really well with interest. Richard, you were talking about um how we've done really well with uh interest.
Yes, I haven't had a chance to talk to Capcom. If we wanted to, we could take, you know, something out of our, you know, we've got a hundred and seven thousand, the money market. I know really, I don't want to touch all of that. I was taking the special project savings accounts. We could take like twenty-five thousand out of that. Um, right now, I think it's four and a half percent is what we're seeing out in the market. Um, you get a six month, which should be like four seventy-five annual, so you'd make. Yeah, and most of them are pretty liquid, but we would just put money that we, we weren't going to touch. And I would say the special projects reserve, take twenty-five thousand out of that and check with Capcom. I'll try to follow up on that. Uh, I can only tell you the one from my church that we bought in. I was told it was already made eighteen hundred dollars. So that's pretty good.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not gonna be a huge amount of money, but it's still just some money.
It's free money, right?
Yeah, and I agree.
I have one other related question. I feel like it's like slightly delicate, but um we gotta, I gotta. So. But so had we received that, we would have put it something that's earning interest and is it like?
We can tell him, well, I mean, I think we're just gonna get a check, so we can do. We need to let them know when we want it so that we can, because it's in a, a, some kind of a savings or um.
Has, 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 we'll have that problem.
Yeah, everything's all.
Everything, so basically they could just cut us a check. That's what I recommend that we ask, just say, we would like to cut a check so we can put that in our own investment portfolio.
Okay, so we can use the money.
It's weird because at the Fisher Library, they had a huge request to the library that still held up a probate for like three years. Whereas the friends got a equally large request that came in the next week. So it just depends on how it's styled. I mean, as long as the will's been probated and everything, shouldn't be any problem for them to touch through a check. And it is a little indelicate. On the other hand, it also helps them that they're not having to be responsible for it anymore. You know, and to say, you know, we'd like to, if we could get that twenty plus twenty, maybe forty thousand we could invest, that would be something.
And as we, if we're about to hear our official word on the, the grant, then we, I sort of feel like we need to know we have all of our ducks in a row. Absolutely. Seeing it in the bank is better than just.
Yes.
The promise of it, which I, I've, not that I don't, no, it's just that it's like, well, no, we need forward with stuff.
I'll talk to Jody. She's working tomorrow. Okay, I'll be here.
I'm sure Jody has a chance.
Absolutely.
It seems to be, I don't.
It only happens when there's a group of people in here. It's a smoke detector. It's hardwired, it's hardwired.
It's a hot air detector up here.
What I can do is I'll find out, send out a quick email to y'all, circulate it, make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
That sounds awesome.
And as soon as we find out when the twenties come, the problems will come.
Yeah, okay, good. Sounds good. Any other questions about financial issue for? All right, moving on to committee reports.
Starting through the marketing, I don't have too much. I want to primarily focus on two things, the July twenty-first new resident welcome event. I know that we need to get a press release out. I'm not sure how much lead time we need, which we're pretty good for now, I would think, but.
Yeah.
About a month, maybe?
About like, I would do like a four week, so it'd be in four weeks ahead of.
Yeah, yeah.
Not much anymore.
So the other things we'll need are just um.
We need to do the mailing to the new residents. The last time. Yeah, do the look up and then do the mailing. Um, I'll put that on, try to get that going mid-June, June, and um.
It's usually brunch and we have bagels and cream cheese. And now I know I also need to bring butter because there was complaints about.
Yeah, it was a feedback.
Okay, so, so that's one thing. Um, obviously, we're going to be talking about the.
The other thing is we should reach out to them.
Yes, I would be very careful. But I, I would probably be better on the same because. Okay, yeah, so. Um, and we're going to ask people if they would like to, to bring um recipes for the cookbook. And we're going to be talking about the cookbook proposal under fundraising, right?
Uh, I don't think we have, we don't have fundraising on the agenda, so. Oh, no, you're right, sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, so just a couple of other little things. Um, I think we need to, you know, the recent programs and assess the fact that we want to do to change things for those that aren't growing people, like what, what is it? And then it's very difficult to say, no, because as you said, like, I'm interested in the John Brown thing. I didn't come. I'm interested in a lot of these things. I don't, because I'm like, I think. Like, what can we do? And, and, you know, if, if it's not working and if there were things that were more clearly popular.
It's so hard to tell. It's the, it is, yeah, it is the bane of all libraries.
Yes.
For doing programs. Like, that is just, it's what everybody deals with. Program um one month and then try and do the same thing the next month and no one shows up. Or you could have a pro, I have had programs where people are like, oh, I really want to get help with this. Okay, I'll set up a program. No one shows up.
Yeah.
You know, so it, yeah, it's, it's extremely hard to figure out. So it's one of those, like, just keep on going. I mean, the jam sessions are going well.
Regarding programs, I mean, one, they had good attendance and two, the two of them.
Here to turn.
Yeah, so I was actually.
Do you ever feel that the Saturday programs overall are doing better than like, like a Friday, six o'clock, six, early evening ones?
I don't know. Sometimes. It really depends on the subject, I think, too, but I mean.
In the summers, probably. Yeah, so that's a factor too, and the weather and all that stuff. Okay, so that's something that we should try, I mean, to the extent that we can, try to get a sense of what's going on. Um, that happened at the library, which I think um that's still going well and.
I haven't been getting many, I haven't. No, um, no one submitted anything from like the public in any way. Um, yeah, yeah. So, and you know, it's hard, I mean, the staff are constantly looking out for it, but it's, you know, it's just, it's more of a tough thing to do. So, you know, I'm gonna keep, we'll keep trying, but like you said, it's, you know, if I'm not hearing everything all the time.
Oh, yeah, no, you can't.
Maybe we can make one up, uh, blood pressure cuff. Still, I mean, you know.
Okay.
I mean, it's just that this checked off. Still, it's like, well, it wasn't working and then you did it and, you know.
Okay. I'm good for that.
Just so we don't have to go on about this. You two bring bios next time.
Just email them to me.
But if you don't email them, you have an assignment, the secretary. And Deborah needs to wear whatever she feels good.
Thank you.
And our next marketing meeting is June tenth.
June tenth is the.
Random.
At what time are we doing that?
So nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Well, I know that Sarah and Toby get competitive.
People get pretty.
I'm, I'm just like, are you kidding?
Anyway, policies. Are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Any updates on policies?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Um, any updates for policies?
Yeah, I'm assembling policies. I expect to have a draft of a um internet policy uh in the next two, two weeks.
Great.
Thank you.
That's huge. Thank you. And you got the policies that I already sent to you?
Yep. Basically, basically what I'll try to do is get the internet policy, try to figure out how it relates to some of the other related policies and then try to figure out a cross.
Okay.
And then we'll move on to the other stuff.
Okay.
It's sort of, it's sort of tricky. It's finding a balance between something that's not overly specific and dense. And try to get stuff that explains what access is, what's appropriate use, and how do you deal with problems?
Okay. Well, yeah, that's kind of the problem is like, appropriate use is, you know, and are the staff monitoring people on their computer? You know, that, that's so weird. How do you do all that?
Well, basically, basically, you're not going to do that because that's just an impossible task. Well, I mean, we can decide what we want to do. My recommendation would stay away from that. And what you really want to do in your policies, explain what protections, if any, we have from a technological standpoint. Do we have filters? What kind of access there is? And basically describes the community that, you know, basically, this is accessing the internet. There's all sorts of materials out there that are inappropriate for some user groups, that folks need to use discretion, understand that they're in public and guide their actions accordingly. And to the extent that children are using it, parents need to take responsibility for their children. And it's not the job of the library to be monitoring uh children's access and then figure out how to navigate that issue.
Right. I mean, it's the same kind of thing with the children, at least of, you know, parents need to be the ones to um police how they, their, what items their kids take out. So it should be the same thing with.
Yeah.
And we don't have filters on any of our computers, so.
I, I assumed we didn't. I was gonna get, when I get to that stage, I was gonna ask. And it's something that we, we may want to consider.
Hmm, maybe.
Not to say that you'll do, it's, I'm not suggesting that you do it. I just say, find out what's available and decide whether we think that's appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, I think the answer is probably, if you believe in a library providing access to available information, then you're gonna give a pretty uh loose, I mean, basically what you're saying in your user policy is that you can't do anything unlawful in connection with the use of this equipment.
Right.
But, you know, you're gonna be hard pressed to decide what's appropriate.
Right, that's kind of what I, that, yeah, that was the hard, who decides that? So my thought was that if it's illegal, then obviously it shouldn't be happening. But I'm not gonna police.
That's, I mean, that's really the main point is that we're not here to police the use of it's available and, you know, you're responsible for your own use. And you can't do stuff that's illegal. Anyway, we'll, we'll, I'll draft the policy. I'll use what's been done before. Uh, see how it fits with what we do. We'll circulate it and figure out whether that's the right place to land.
Sounds good.
It's a plan and it'll get done.
That would be great.
Uh, we've been talking about this for what, a year and a half now?
Um, much longer, actually.
Okay. It, it seems like only a year and a half. Like, it's like, they bet you, they'll give you this policy in seven days.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we tried to get a meeting on the calendar. It didn't work. So since the three of us are here, any chance of Tuesday next week or Thursday next week evening?
Tuesday.
Twenty-first or Thursday, the twenty-fourth?
It means the twenty-third.
Oh, is it the twenty-third?
Um, well, we have, you, the twenty-first, you have book group and the.
Oh, that's the idea. So how about the?
Um, Raylan is going to be in a spring concert that night at six thirty, but we could do it earlier than that if he wanted to do the afternoon.
I can do afternoon.
Oh, you can? Okay, so what, what time would work?
Um, let's see, I want to leave my house around, so I could do four, like, four, three thirty, four, four thirty. Yeah. No, 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 yeah, we.
Yeah, there's no D and D.
Nope, there's no Lego Club, everybody, yeah. It's, so Majin will be fine.
Yeah, I can.
Sure.
Yes. Okay, four o'clock for an hour, four to five.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Wait, did you say four o'clock?
Yeah, four to.
Four, okay.
That's my update for.
And uh, news committee?
But we had a meeting uh at the Green Garage and um that went well. We talked about the space we were able to use. Um, the fridge, I think it, we're still waiting on.
So the PJ, yeah, PJ, they're thinking about replaced, giving us the fridge. It's in the town hall.
Right.
Placing that long. So Stephanie is gonna get to.
Cool, okay.
Um, and talked about the stream or the creek. Uh, that was the main thing for me, but, because they don't want to put up temporary fencing, which is fair, fair, makes sense, but I think some sort of
Visual barrier.
Yeah, visual reminder would be helpful. Um, I just said we could put up little flags. Uh, we are going to be able to take field trips, it sounds like, so that's great. They're, Jessica and Taylor are working on a list of field trips. And swim is gonna happen.
Did they say how much it was gonna cost this year? Just if it went up or not?
No, I don't think so, but I'm just waiting to hear back from. Administered.
Okay. And are you, you gonna get the, um, the applications for them?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much.
So just so you all know, in terms of the insurance stuff, I just got an email from PJ, and it sounds like the town, so the town, Jen Van Duzen is the town's insurance agent. She's been going back and forth with her, with the insurance company. And it looks like the insurance company is telling them that we need to be, the town has to, the library should be covering the. Which. It's a town, yeah. But she, you know, the other thing too, though, is I'm reading through this feed, and it says, you know, the guy asked Jen if we have a library board, are we reimbursed? Is the town reimbursed by the library for the program? And she wrote back that said, no, the library does not reimburse the town. There are times actually the town board reimburses the library for expenses. It sounds like it's not, it's, it is completely their program. Like, they pay us to do it. So it's not like, and everything gets reimbursed to the town. So. I'll call Jen. I'll call her tomorrow.
Is there contractual agreement between town and us?
Yes.
We're not even holding it on our grounds.
Right.
So it's not the fire department. So, yeah, it should be, I'd have to look at the contract, but see, the contract will say somewhere in there who is responsible.
Maybe the rest of the.
Yeah.
I don't know, because most of these contracts, the town would say, you know, we can put down a, you know, so, so, you know.
The town doesn't actually, they didn't write the agreement. We write the agreement. They say, oh, sounds good, and then we all sign off.
I really, I think, I think. Right now, you've got information going into town people, and they may be looking at it differently than what it really, and certainly now that you've got the fire department involved, I would think that, you know, let's just find out what the insurance agent recommends. Because if they're throwing it back on y'all, then we'd have to go to our insurance company. Wouldn't hurt to ask, but they would have to say, we need to see the contract, more than likely. The agreement.
The contract basically says, we operate the camp on their behalf. And it says, build the town for necessary expenses. And at the conclusion of, camp provide a final accounting of all expenses. The town will provide funds for events as outlined in the budget.
So one of the expenses is the insurance.
Right, just can't say it. We're operating the camp, then the insurance would be our responsibility, but we can build a town for.
That. Sounds like.
Just, just think about, just think about it in terms of liability, because that's what this is about. So the three parties, or at least, there are more than three parties, but the town, if it's being held on fire department property, the fire department, and the library in connection with running the camp are all the major players who would be sued in the event that something happens. And then theoretically, you know, the people working for the, um, the various entities have possible liability. So ultimately, all the parties who are involved in this need to make sure that they are either, they have the insurance on their cap, or they're covered by a policy of somebody else. And that's really sort of where it comes down. Ultimately, the town ought to be picking up the tab.
Okay, I'm gonna call tomorrow. She's the town agent. She works for, she does, she's with Matt's with Harder. Our insurance agent is someone named Celeste Sacco, but she is down in Long Island, so. Through the, no, she's, she's through, so we used to have, what was it called? Cooley Insurance, and then they sold it to somebody else. So she's with.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt just to send a quick email to our agent saying we've come across a situation that the operator is our camp.
I've already talked to her about it, and I'm, she's waiting. She needs to, she said she needs to res, figure it out. Our agent needs to figure it out. So she's, I already sent her a huge email. I sent her, no, I didn't send her the agreement, but she did ask for the insurance certificates that the town, that the county asked for. So I sent her those, and then I just sent her a huge rundown of how we, how it all works, so. She said she.
Scott's absolutely correct. Have to just make sure that there's something that would respond in the event that we were sued. And that's what insurance is for. And as you said, there's three parties to the agreement, the town, the fire department, and us. Premises is the fire department, the sponsor is the town, the operator is us.
And these policies are gonna cover the officers, directors, employees, and all of that stuff. But ultimately, that's the coverage. There needs to be coverage for all of that, and all the folks who are involved need, need coverage.
So the, we have directors and officers' insurance. And then, but the town is the one who pays, the director of the camp, the assistant director, and all of the camp staff. So wouldn't that then be under the town's insurance, not ours, because we're not paying them? They're not our employees. They are the town employees.
That is, that is. That is correct. However, when a lawsuit shows up, it's gonna be.
Everybody.
Spider gun. So we'll be named, fire department will be named. And at that point, it's when, you know, just come back to the agreement. I know, I know, it's just, I was in insurance for 40 years, trust me, it's no fun. And what happens is it goes back to the agreement, and the agreement is really flout. There's no specific saying that, you know, we hold, the town holds us harmless for what we do, or we hold the town harmless, or that sort of thing. And it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to have the insurance people help us fill up a better agreement. Just to make sure we're protected. Because invariably, someone's gonna get hurt, and everybody's gonna get dragged into it.
Yeah, the insurance people won't mind helping.
No, not at all.
They would love to.
Exactly. Yeah.
I mean, ours just offered to do that for me on several occasions recently about events that we're having.
And they would be very appreciative of the fact that you're, you know, doing this ahead of. Actively, instead of you bully them, saying we've been sued and have coverage, and they're like, oh, something like that. So it's, it's too big proactive. And you've got both insurance agents involved, the one for the city and one for the town and the one for us.
We know what I can do to help them.
Okay.
It shouldn't be too terribly cumbersome, and it shouldn't be too terribly expensive. It just has to be styled correctly. As Eric says, that the town is officially the sponsor. But we are the operator. That's, that's a different.
And the only reason the fire department needs to be, the fire department is on my state side last year.
They wouldn't have had anything to do with it.
Camp, you know, swamp, swamp.
Hold each other harmless on this.
I'll, I'll reach out to both our insurance agent and Jen from town and just see what I can work out. And the fire department's gonna have to look into theirs then as well, because right now, they think that it's just gonna, they're gonna need an extra certificate from the town that says they're covered, but they're probably gonna need. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Work on all that tomorrow or Monday.
One last thing on camp-related stuff. So we brought up, as I mentioned last time, the requirement of AEDs at camp. So I brought that proposal to workshop meeting with pricing for the one that I recommend, brought the information in terms of, it's not the same one for these schools, but it was one that we use, the fire department and our mutual aid partners use as well. So we're, now we just have to try to see if there's a state contract. There isn't one in New York, so we're looking at these two other sites. So, but we said, can't find it there, then they'll use the quotes that we received, and they're probably buying one at a time, so they'll buy the one for summer camp. And then they're considering others, including one for the library.
Okay.
Do you need the AED grant website specifically, website?
Um, I think I've looked into that, and I forget why I didn't. But I'll look at it again, so I don't remember.
And the town is saying that they will pay for it if that goes?
Well, definitely for camp. To be determined.
Thank you, the sponsor, although you for that indicates to me that they're.
Yeah.
They're.
Well, I mean, they're paying, they're paying for it, and they're paying us. Like, we are just, we're technically a contractor for them. Where does it go?
I know.
Would the kid, would we need to do training for everybody on how to use it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me tell Jessica. Okay.
All right, let's go ahead then with the fall fundraiser proposal. And before Sarah, I'm just gonna thank Sarah because technically, I mean, our committees are kind of a mess right now, so that's sort of what it means to have. Really, this should have been on me to write up and everything. Sarah, keep it on. So thank you, Sarah, for doing this.
A bunch of young DMN insurance.
Insurance does play into this.
Yeah, well, insurance comes up again. But before that, I know that we were all, the proposal, the following question. For Stevenson, which would be sponsored by the library and the MSL's cookbook. And the more we thought about it and the cost of creating or publishing the cookbook, we thought, maybe there is a way that we could use the cookbook to provide us with a great fundraiser opportunity. So we are now thinking about doing a SNL cookbook fall fundraiser, which would take place on Saturday, the 25th of October. And I spoke with Shalina about it, and she was game to have it at Four Fat Fowl, provided that we cleaned the kitchen and the gym beforehand, and I would assume also afterwards. So I meant to, why she should be left with that. So I think that shouldn't be an issue. So like, from a Quick Notes version, I would say this is kind of a great way of going because it's fairly low expense. We have a free place to have it. If, if all trustees are willing to bring a dish, the food is gonna be free. And we also ask people who have submitted recipes to the cookbook, if they're attending the fundraiser and would be willing to bring their dish to the profile. That would be great. It wouldn't be mandatory. So I think we have enough food that way. And we would sell liquor, specifically beer and wine. Jen looked into what that would cost us, and it was surprisingly inexpensive to obtain the template license, which is the one day license is 39 dollars. And we sell alcohol tickets when people came in. And we have to purchase the alcohol here and wine, add an operating go cider too. The less, the less, the happier I am, I think, with, the more simple it is at a, you know, wholesale beer place, or a winery, or a brewery. I don't understand why, but.
Yeah, and then, it's not like, I was trying to be right, Karen. But yeah, it sounds, I mean, that's what they say on the website and I calls, but it sounds like maybe that's not always how it works in the real world.
Okay, so meaning like, where do they sell it, you know?
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
It could like, we couldn't go dates.
Yeah. Sounds like maybe that happens.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll look into that some more. So what we were thinking is, each person that comes, if they bring a dish, then they get one free drink ticket. All, all else is $10 per glass. We're thinking it would be two and a half hour event, so say from 5:30 to 8:00. Or 5:00 to 7:30, whatever makes sense. So it's not super long. They say that for an event, you should accept a drink per hour, so I'm saying an average of two drinks, and some people are getting the free drink.
Friday night, the 25th?
Saturday.
So Saturday is the 26th.
Oh, God, okay. The 26th, I'm not good with my dates. That's the next.
No, that would be the Sunday. We would have to, I gotta make sure we can get that date. We normally do Sunday, right, for the Halloween party? Yes, we do, because there are people who.
No, wait, we don't. We usually do it on Saturday. It would be the same day.
Yeah, okay, so we'll do it the previous week. Whatever it is.
Yeah.
October 19.
Can you talk to Tammy about whether we can do the Halloween party on the 26th? Or do you have, I mean, I can.
Saturday, 26th?
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing that Shalina said is, if we are going to do this, if we are gonna serve alcohol, and we would be the servers in this instance, since we have the temporary liquor license, that the Four Fat Fowl needs a certificate of insurance for the library naming Four Fat Fowl as additionally insured for this specific event. Just to be talking to.
Yeah, what you're looking for is a legal liability.
I'll, I'll wait until we get summer tubes.
And it's just an endorsement.
19th is the roast weekend. So what about the week before that? We wanted it to be sort of harvest time.
No, I mean, 26th, we.
I think the Columbus Day weekend is the 7th. Well, my calendar is wrong then, because I've got the 7th on here for Columbus Day. 14th, 15th. I think it was made in China, so I'm not surprised. Maybe they just don't have that. Oh, I have on here that we had talked originally about the 9th of November. Did we change that?
We changed it, and I don't remember why, but I'm fine as long as it's, you know. That works.
So the 9th, I think it was probably more, that's the Saturday, November the 2nd.
The next weekend is the.
Okay, so November 2nd. Does that, does that sound good to everybody?
We're doing the Christmas swap.
Thanksgiving is before Thanksgiving.
That's a good problem.
Very terrible. I usually write in my calendar with a pencil. So I'll try this again.
Yeah. I might wanna be turned to play and. So that would be, so free, free venue, free food, free entertainment. We're also thinking of generating income by raffling off a number of Stevenson items, including the Stevenson barn quilt, pottery from one of our many friends, Scott. Anita, a wine and cheese basket kind of thing. And any other ideas that would be specific. And then everybody that comes to the fundraiser gets happy of the. So then on to the cookbook. Holly Rastin said that she would devote her time and experience to creating the cookbook at no cost, so she's free. She said she'd need a board member to assist creative along the way. That might be me or, you know, or some, some cookbook people. And, you know, we can, we can use our logo and our colors and all that.
Oh, definitely.
The board will send out requests for recipes and maybe some anecdotes about Stevenson, potentially drawings, art, which we'll submit to Holly. We need to email requests for submission to our card member list, our donor list, our new resident potluck attendee list, as well as email local organizations like Food Bantry, Circle Society and so on. There will be a couple different versions of the email letter.
We also put it on social media.
Yes. And then we thought we would go around to local restaurants and I came up with a list of fourteen to see if they would be willing to sponsor the cookbook at a hundred dollars a shot and have an ad in the cookbook. And then if they'd like to come for free to the event and have a table to showcase something, they could do that. Or just, you know, sponsor and have the ad. So that would generate.
Could we ask them to put a recipe in as well?
Yes, and a recipe, yes. It, it, it's, you know.
If they're willing to share their secrets.
Special sauce.
Right.
Yeah. It will require a one month production turnaround and another month input the recipes. So Holly said that ten to cut off was July first. But we can still ask people who come to the summer and new residence welcome events. And, you know, maybe ten or so would dribble in and she can probably accommodate that. We anticipate publishing a hundred cookbooks at six dollars per book, so that's six hundred dollars. We're spending the charge fifty dollars a head for the fundraiser. As mentioned, the venue, entertainment, food, free income generated from the fifty dollar tickets, the tickets to purchase alcohol, the rocket tickets and sponsorships. So the income, best case scenario, if you look through all that, comes to six thousand three hundred. The expenses, if you look through all that, comes to nine hundred and forty five. Plus, we then have another thirty cookbooks remaining, if it's seventy people that attended the fundraiser. So, so we can sell those separately for twenty dollars and we're almost at six thousand dollars income from it. Worst case scenario, if only fifty people attend, the full income situation is four thousand three hundred. The total expense is eight hundred and seventy five, which is three thousand four hundred and twenty five. If we are able to sell all fifty of the remaining cookbooks. And I think we probably will be as long as we get enough submissions to people who submitted, I would think, the article. Where that brings another thousand, so four thousand four hundred. And the thing that's a little, I'm a little cloudy about is the cost of beers and wines and how much we really need. We need to know how many people are coming, so we need to get people to commit RSVP because we don't wanna buy more than. Although we could probably use it for other things like raffles and stuff like that, but at least, yeah. So that's.
Don't kick it. And.
No, but.
Could you ask like the, I mean, the twenties, you know, and then beer diviner to? Yeah, like, I mean, I would assume that they would be able to help with doing like a bulk order of.
Yeah, brewery is one of the options.
Right, they are, but they're gonna do their own stuff, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And it's probably a little bit high end, like we're thinking we're not getting top shelf stuff, right? We're not getting. Okay, we want.
Yeah, we're trying to, yeah.
Or we'd have to charge. So that's the proposal and we felt like we needed to get buy-in or agreement from the board. Probably because there's a lot of work that will go into this, do it.
I think there's a, I'm always pessimist in terms of how many things we're gonna sell, how many people are gonna come and all that. But I think even if we, even if we take the worst case and knock it down a little bit, it's still probably a fairly good fundraiser for us. Yeah, when we look at, when we ask the year or two and we look at other things, it's hard to get anything that makes us much money. But it does require the board's buy-in in terms of being able to say, yes, I'll make a dish or two. I'll be part of this event. I'll be. Help my public size. I'll submit recipes, you know.
Yeah.
Help to make it. I'm going with that. You know, before we kind of fast forward. For feedback and.
Not to be like buying it, but it's very likely necessary.
I think to make money.
To get through the night, it is.
And also to get back. I mean, one of the reasons we know that our people have it as well as. So I, I think it's.
I, I hear your point though, and I don't actually have drinks either, so I'm not, but yeah, I think, I think for the.
No, it's about the library.
Like go to the ambiance, you know, like just for the type of.
Yeah, I mean, I totally get it.
Really drink.
If you're gonna make a kind of a party with live music and entertainment. Hot pies or whatever.
When we thought about, oh, what if we brought in like here to bed or somebody else, but they want.
They were gonna make money too.
Something like that. Event wise or something, cocktail, things that like, we had her.
Yeah, yeah.
Events and stuff, but that I don't think is an opportunity for us.
No, they're gonna make money.
Oh, no, I mean, if you brought, you know.
Might attract.
Twenty, if you brought them and they make all the money, you, you know, you might get a little bit, you know.
And if we had something else that we were doing that was generating, I think that could be great. Back to people that we don't have. So, yeah. There are a lot of other things to offer, but I mean.
Yeah, and it's not really long, but it is like there is.
So happy to have you.
Yeah. I would go on to.
All right.
But are people pretty much on the. That feeling, thoughts?
What, I, I think it's a good idea. My only question is, I'm, well, I'm not concerned. I think it'll be fine, whatever we do. Does it make sense, rather than a hard copy cookbook, do something in an electronic format? Probably save some money.
I think, I think if you're gonna go get something at a fundraiser, you want something in your hand. And.
But my question, my question is, I would say, my question is, do people want a cookbook?
I think if it's.
That's really.
If we add things like pictures of people around the library, if we have like stories, it's not just a cookbook anymore. It's like a album commemorative thing, so.
And also people have submitted their recipes, so they, they already have skin in the game.
Yeah, anybody that's.
Want it, yeah. And the restaurants. Yeah, and, and I know that the publisher that Holly wants to use, they don't do electronic. It's, it's hard. Not at all. I mean, I guess we could look into other options, but I, I think for our purposes and selling it.
Yeah, I totally get your concern and I similarly like right now, like I only just Google whatever. And I don't even, I don't even validate the bookmark. Just like, oh, I'll just Google it again the next time I need it. So I get your point with that. However, so if we were just doing this as a like, we're gonna make a cookbook and sell it. I don't think, I wouldn't be on board either. I think it has to be that people wanna, want the hard copy cookbook because it is this fundraiser, because it is the library, because it is the community, because it's that. It's not really because they wanna cook, because they want, you know.
Agreed.
Yeah, I have a cookbook that my mom and my aunt put together and it has pictures of all of our kids. It has pictures of my grandparents, of my aunts and uncles, and that's what I use it for. It's to look back at all the pictures. You know, it also has recipes, but.
Um, I, I gotta see.
It's not gonna be a.
That I couldn't tell you. I did, the only reason I'd go is because it's a small community.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's normally these like, like church ones or something, there aren't.
Probably not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I doubt, I doubt.
No, it would be surprising.
Fancy as that.
Yeah.
But we could talk to local artists and see if they would like. Or whatever, that would be kind of cool. I think it's often that are filled about that, maybe.
Our deadline is July the first.
Yes. It's a soft deadline, that's my.
Yeah.
He wants most of our signatures.
Understand, understand. Which is a six page.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
But to the point is, yeah, we do, we kinda need a, we need a goal before, because we gotta get. That's.
I think it's based on, I try and. I think people, there's like a certain part of people that are. People that are sharing all the pictures and. Yeah, very family stuff. Yeah. People that moved away, but that's. Yeah. And the Heritage Society people will probably be interested in it. They have some things that they might like. Yeah. Yeah, so but we're gonna, it's gonna be a bit of a heavy lift for the board. There's gonna be a lot of moving pieces. People when you get out of this.
Could you email out a list of the restaurants?
I can tell you where they are.
Okay, well, you got over fourteen.
Yeah, I think we came up with fourteen.
I think we're gonna put together a little like, you know, proposal, like, here's what you get for your, for your books kind of thing. So that we can like, unofficially, yeah, so the people can then bring with them if they want.
Mario's, Bluebird, Berry, Seventeen. Cherry, Norate, Mavericks, M and M's. Jimmy D's, we're getting close to the fourteen. I have.
No, I mean, I mean, just because I know the guy from Jimmy.
Yes, that, that would be great if we could like divide that up as well.
Yeah, that's kind of a good idea.
Who's got a connection?
Yeah. Yeah, wouldn't watch a good idea. Yes.
I'd thank you very much.
Did you hear?
Yeah, you have to, you have to straw.
I know, I know. How the Jared's not there.
Oh, really?
I didn't know. Yeah, these are not. I said, I'm outside there. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
After we stop the recording.
So Holly know, she already drafted a letter which we will revise because at the time, I think we'll mention the fact there's going to be a fundraiser and this will be something that is fair at the fundraiser in the letter, right? So it's a different thing than it was, but, but we have something to work. Different one for the organizations and for individuals and different ones for the restaurants. By the truth. Working on that.
Okay.
Title names, the only cookbook in Stevenson?
Only Stevenson. That's. We can put the blue bird on top on the side or a bunch of bluebirds. Yeah. That'd be fun.
Was that, should that you volunteer to?
That's just my contribution.
All right. So main question here I have is scholarship, will that? When we get. We were, sorry, we gave the awarding.
Usually, yeah, let me see what date I put in there for the deadline.
So I am talking about, do we, do we vote on it in the next meeting?
We didn't use, we didn't vote on it in the meeting last time. Everybody just gave me their votes on email and then.
Do we have any submissions?
No, we won't get submissions until like the day before it's due. Which is. I said May thirty first, which I can change if we feel like that's not, that's too late. But usually it only takes about a week for everybody to read through them and then choose, you know.
Yeah, I think that's good. As long as we join them by, you know. Thinking about.
No, yeah, last, yeah, last year it worked really well with just everybody giving their, their, their votes and then we were able to do it that way. So, so, yeah, we probably won't get anything from anybody until like May twenty ninth. So. We offer a scholarship to any Stevenson senior who's going on to a two or four year scholars, four year school. It's for two thousand dollars and it's, if you live in Stevenson, so it's in April Park, it's Stevenson or Berlin and. They submit everything to me and then I blackout everything so that no one, and then give everybody else the applications and then you vote on which one you think. Very nice. And then when they come, we give them, we have like a little reception and give them the actual check and. Yep.
The other thing that we are gonna need to start figuring out is the whole grant and work.
Oh, yeah, coming up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to that.
Paul.
Paul.
Start coming up with a game plan. Plan, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Have any old business? Here I am, you're a member of the public, do you have? Here I am, you're a member of the public, do you have?
I don't, it's a lot going on.
There is a lot going on, yes.
Yeah, we're a pretty busy library and a pretty busy board. We do, do like a very.
Grant comes, it's gonna be all separate.
I, I would assume we should do it.
Uh, I'm not aware of any correspondence. Was the planning calendar, was the thing about the scholarships under the planning calendar?
Oh, I do have one holder this day. Did anybody go to the Friends meeting? I think we kind of had talked ourselves out of. At the last meeting, but I was curious, did anybody go?
Alright.
I'm the one in Pitsfield, if you wanna see how they operate, you're welcome to come in.
I looked it up and saw you in the, a mass of people.
A Friends group, the Friends group is responsible for raising money for the library. Um, but Friends can't have, can't be the same as the board. Getting people to become a friend or making a Friends group is difficult, because. We had one at one time, a long time ago. But it dissolved.
One of the UHS, one of the upper Hudson libraries was doing. Yeah, tutorial. Something we can do right now, but.
Oh, sorry, one other thing. Um, I forgot to let everybody know, I sent out an email, but I do need to know by May thirty first. If anyone wants to go to the Upper Hudson Library, um, the celebration that they have, it's forty dollars per person. They want the directors to just kind of get information and then send everything off. Anyone wants to go to that, let me know. Um, it's usually a fun time. Right now it's gonna be, it used to be a sit down dinner, but now it's more like hors d'oeuvres and buffet, not even a buffet, I don't think, but they're just. Cocktail, have very fun stuff, so. You get quite, you get, at least, they were joking about the chocolate fondue fountain, so I think there's a fondue fountain at the very least. It's small bites and hors d'oeuvres. Oh, no. Oh, please don't say that. I thought you were gonna say another virus like COVID or something.
I got that stereo.